Welcome to the Murray City Municipal Council Committee of the Whole for January 19th, 2021. And all council members are present, so we'll get started. There is a notice that I need to read. It is hereby given that this meeting will occur electronically without an anchor location in accordance with Utah Code 52-4-2074 due to infectious disease COVID-19 novel coronavirus. The council chair has determined that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location because physical distancing measures may be difficult to maintain in the Murray City Council chambers. Okay, the public may view the meeting via the live stream at www.murraycitylive.com or on Facebook at www.facebook.murraycityutah. Murray is capitalized. Citizen comments or public hearing comments may be read live. Let's see, into the record by sending an email in advance or during the meeting to That's all lowercase. Comments are limited to less than three minutes. Include your name and contact information. All right, so let's get started with approval of the minutes for the Committee of the Whole for December 8th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I'll make motion that we approve the Committee of the Whole minutes from December 8th, 2020.
All right, it has been seconded and we have a motion. So, let's see, Brooke, would you call the roll?
Sure, Mr. Hels.
Aye.
Ms. Martinez.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Ms. Dominguez.
Aye.
And Ms. Turner.
Aye. Thanks, Brooke. Let's continue on to the discussion items. And the first one is the 2020 Moderate Income Housing Report with Melinda Greenwood and Jared Hall. It's good to see you guys again. Seems like we just left.
Well, I'm still trying to catch my breath from the last meeting, so.
I know, me too.
Jared prepared the report and I'm going to just let him take it from here.
Are you guys seeing the screen that says moderate income housing report?
Yep.
Yep, oh, good. Great, that might be the only thing that goes well about this. So, here we go. This is, every year, we are now required to, as a city, file a moderate income housing report with the state of Utah. And this, just I'll go over a couple of things that are different about that now than have been in the past. It's been a thing that cities have been doing for a number of years. In recent, last couple of years, there have been some changes. And so, I wanted to go over some of those and just give you the real rough outline of the report. I know that in the council action form that Melinda sent you all, you got a copy of the actual report. There's a lot of, a lot of data in there and a lot of things in there, more detailed responses that I'm going to go over in slides here. But if you have any questions about anything that you've seen there, please feel free to just jump in and ask them. I want to be brief and give you time to ask any questions about this report or what the impacts of it are, what it means for the city every year. First off, it is going to be something that we're going to be doing yearly now, annually. It has previously been, I think when it started out back in the late 90s, it was every third year, and then it went to every other year, and cities got together and filed it all in groups, and it's kind of gone lots of different directions. In 2018, they passed SB 34 that said you're going to file it other than this next year in 2019, and we'll give you all a break to come into compliance with some things. Bigger cities are going to be filing it every year. So, that's us. We're going to be filing every year by December 1st, a report on our modern income housing element. It includes several things. As you can see there on the slide, it does include an updated projection of the city's five-year affordable housing needs. And that's based on these, those four things that are listed, that the projected growth of our households, that's our demand, the projected housing stock that we will have, that's our supply, and then the median housing costs and the projected median household incomes for the city. So, there's a lot of data that goes into it, and we'll get into where that data comes from in a moment. The report also has to include a review or findings of our modern income housing element of our city's general plan. And that's in the form of responses to certain questions that they ask us in the form. The report also has to include our most recently adopted copy of our modern income housing element of the general plan, and then the report has to be posted to the city's website. So, we are in full compliance this year, and we will be every year as long as we're, as long as we're able. And a couple of things to note about this. One of the things that SB 34 in 2018 demanded was that cities couldn't have just a modern income housing plan that was separate from the general plan. SB 34 said you, you cities have to have a general plan, and that general plan has to have a modern income housing element that's part of the plan. So, we actually already did. But then, it did a couple of other things as well, and we'll get into those in just a moment. I mentioned just briefly that the, we have to, the main part of the report is to update the projection of the city's five-year affordable housing needs. And that's this, that summed up really basically in this table right here that's in the, in the report. So, what you're looking at basically is the 2020 shortages at three different levels of moderate income, levels of median income for the county, Salt Lake County, and for Murray City. Eighty percent of that median income, 50% and 30%. And according to the data, we have an abundance or an overage of 140 units in that 80% of the modern income of the median income range, and a deficit of about, well, a net total of about 2,500 units in the two lower categories, in 50% and 30%. So, that doesn't, I mean, it's kind of depressing to look at those red numbers, and they look, they look bad maybe, but that's only if you're not looking at the data for the rest of the county and the rest of the state and the rest of the United States of America, frankly. These are not numbers that are unique to Murray. We have an affordable housing shortage throughout the country. We actually do pretty well, that we still have a category where we are running a surplus of units is, is good because the lines trend downward. So, we're all fighting what you have to see as a kind of a losing battle unless some, some big changes get made. But that's, that's where the numbers shake out. The data that we use to generate these numbers comes from the Census Bureau. They run the American Community Survey, and we can use those numbers to generate these, these final totals. Next year's an exciting year because it's the actual census number, it's not the interim numbers, it's the, the good hard numbers that we only get once every 10 years. So, it'll be kind of a fun report for all nerds everywhere. So, let me, let me move on, and we can come back if you have any questions about that. The, the other part of the, of the report is that we have to review the elements of our modern income housing plan and our strategies that are contained in that. And I mentioned that there were some other changes from SB 34 back in 2018. And one of those was that they dictated that you had to have a modern income housing element to your general plan instead of just a separate plan, and that it had to have, you had to have a certain number of strategies from a menu that they provided. And when I say they, I mean the state of Utah. So, here's, there was good news and bad news for us as Murray City. In our element, in our general plan, we already had more than enough strategies. We had six or seven strategies already, and they coincided beautifully with what they were asking for as a state. However, we were missing two strategies that we were required to have because we're what's called a transit city. We have transit lines that run through the city and transit stations in the city at the tracks and commuter rail station. So, we were, we were required by SB 34 to have those two top ones that you see, maintain reduced residential parking requirements around transit stations. Ours is worded a little differently, but basically had to have reduced residential parking requirements where you had transit stations. And you had to implement transit oriented development and mixed use zones for properties around transit stations. We were already doing those things in our zoning, but we didn't state them explicitly in our general plan. So, at the end of the year in 2018, we updated our, or in 2019, rather, we updated our general plan to include those two strategies as well. And the other strategies that we were already promoting were, as you see following there, to ensure zoning of residential areas wasn't prohibiting compatible types of housing, to promote affordable housing options, to continue supporting accessory dwelling units. That's, that's been a big deal for a lot of cities. A lot of cities that weren't doing anything for modern income housing elected in 2019 to adopt accessory dwelling units. It seemed like an easy thing to do. We'd been doing it as Murray City for a number of years already. So, again, we were kind of ahead of, ahead of the curve in that regard, to support the sub-density bonuses and support housing types, et cetera. One of the things we haven't, we haven't undertaken yet, although it's a strategy and a goal that we've identified as that final one, to review the zoning ordinances and make any modifications to allowable housing types and lot sizes and setbacks that might limit types of housing in a zone. We haven't really done a comprehensive review and proposed any big changes to the regular zoning codes, but it's something that we could look at. Again, one of the requirements was that it was to be part of the general plan, so we have updated our general plan to include those two, those two other strategies. And all of that's in the report as well. But that's basically the modern income housing report for the year. We're required to file it every year, and although these numbers, I'm going to go back a couple of slides, even when these numbers for lots of cities, and they're already this way for lots of cities, even if those are negative or deficits in, in every category for a city, really the, it's not that you have to show that you're positive in all these categories, it's that you have, the other part of the plan is what's more important, that you illustrate as a city or demonstrate as a city that you are, A, looking at the numbers, and that you know that there's an issue, or that there are issues that need to be addressed, and that you have a plan that addresses those issues, and that you're actively trying to see those strategies through. So, that's really the kicker. So, and we're, we're able to do all of that successfully. This is tied to our transportation funding. SB 34 ties these reports, filing these reports and demonstrating that you are making a good faith effort basically as a city to, to deal with modern income housing needs to your transportation funding that's available. I think Trey was mentioning in a couple of weeks ago, the project to improvement, to make improvements at the intersection of College Drive and 53rd South. That came from a transportation fund initiative that might not be available if we cease to file these reports, or if we stop concerning ourselves with modern income housing. So, it does matter that we do these things and that we comply with these, these rules from the state and have a modern income housing plan that can be effectuated. Do you have any questions for staff at this point about the modern income housing plan? Great. We can always, we, we kind of, I thought we had until the end of December like we normally had, but SB 34 also said we're going to file them on December 1st. We can also try to bring them to you before they're getting filed, but the filings actually, the data is the data, we can't really change what it is. So, we want to make you aware of it, and so you can see it as a council and know that it's there. And if people in your districts have questions about what the city does for modern income housing, there's a lot of information in that report. There's a lot of great, interesting numbers. Some of them are a little depressing, but they are really interesting about household size and the trends for household size, median incomes in the county and in Murray, and where they're trending, what those trend lines are. That's, they're all in those tables that are in that report. So, when you, when you want something fun to look at someday, point people that direction to the modern income housing report. It's kind of fun to see, so.
Jared, just, and if you want to stop sharing your screen.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Sure, there you go.
To add on, just a couple of things. I did include in the information that we sent to you, two additional items. One was the study that the Kemsey Gardner Institute put out about the affordable housing, which I thought was interesting for a couple of points, is they, they really kind of celebrate and highlight fire clay as a success story, and that's, I, I think sometimes we don't look at it from that standpoint because we do have some issues over there with parking and some other things. But it's, it's nice to, to see the others recognize that fire clay really has accomplished some of these purposes that the moderate and income, moderate income and affordable housing plans have set out to solve and to have the development addressed in those transit oriented areas. The other thing I included was the article that was put forward in December, which was two things. One, a response to that Kemsey Gardner study, but also it was a summary of that study. And so, if you don't want to take the time to read the whole study, don't blame you because we're not all nerds like to nerd out on information like me and Jared. But if you read that couple pages of an article, I think it gives a really succinct summary of that study and, and helps to pinpoint and further explain what the state legislators really are asking us to accomplish by requiring these reports. And as Jared mentioned, you know, we're required to submit this report annually now, but we're not necessarily required to perform. And one thing to point out is that we are a lot better off as far as our numbers and figures than many other communities are. But another thing that I, that I want to follow on that point with is the, the state legislature and our representatives are bringing forward more requirements all the time for us to address these issues. And when I say us, I don't necessarily mean just Murray City, but for cities in general to address these issues. And I was in a discussion last week with the Redevelopment Association, and we were reviewing some of the proposed bills that will be coming forward through this legislative session. And there is a bill that, that is now looking to tie not only our transportation funds, but also economic development funds through GOED that might be dispersed to our city to ensuring that these affordable housing issues are being addressed by cities. And so, just really, the point with sharing that information with you is that this is something that really is, is being, it's a pressure point that's being applied not only to Murray City, but, but to all cities. There are special requirements and provisions that we have to go through based on the fact that we're a transit city, as Jared mentioned earlier. All of this has been put into state code, and I would expect from here going forward that these, that these requirements are going to become more stringent as time goes forward and as the affordable housing crisis continues to, to get worse. And so, just kind of preparing you for that. And again, if you ever have any questions about the information that we've presented or that we put out to you in a packet, please feel free to reach out. We're happy to, to try and explain that. This next report that will be due December of 2021 will be a very interesting one because we will have that additional information coming back from the 2020 census. So, stay tuned for more nerding out on reporting numbers.
Okay, Melinda, thank you. We're kind of running late, but are there questions at this point for Melinda? Kath?
Sorry. Go ahead, Kath.
Diane read my mind.
I saw you move, I thought it was.
My question was, and this is sort of hugging back to our conversation in RDA about the market versus what we can impact in development. How do we practically meet those goals with medium income housing or any type of housing that we have goals for? I mean, I think this is hugely important, but I guess I'm a little confused in how we can best practically beat the goals within our abilities.
Well, that's one of the reasons that the, the important part of the report is actually the, the explanation of our strategies and how we're doing on those. One, one way, for example, is to allow varieties of housing like accessory dwelling units. It does make an impact, they tend to be affordable or more affordable than other types of housing. So, anytime you're allowing a diversity of housing, you're typically allowing that to happen. If you read that Kemsey Gardner report too, you're going to find a really pretty succinct, even without the, the article that explains it, a pretty succinct explanation of what the best practices are. And that is to increase, you can't really impact affordability for housing in a market like this unless you increase densities in certain areas. The best way to do that are along tracks lines, which is why we're identified as a transit city with three good track stations. We have an ability to put density where it can be best handled that not every city has the ability to do. So, for us, that's, that's the way you impact it. It's a regional problem, it's, it's a global problem really for the country. You're, you're right, we can only do so much, and that's why it's really sort of accountability exercise. Are we trying to do the things that we can do to impact? And that's to allow density, to allow diversity of housing types, and to recognize that, that that has to be done if we're going to have any impact on the affordability. Utah ranked, I'm going to get this wrong, in the, in the top 25 metro areas in the country for lack of affordability, and the top five for increase in housing price. It's, it's really difficult right here, right now. That's, you don't have to know that from data, you know that from looking around. All you have to do is visit Zillow to know, that's a fact. But it's, it's a, it's a problem that is mostly market driven, but we do have some ways that we can impact it. And density is the main one. Allowing mixed uses and densities where they're appropriate is the best thing we can really do.
Okay, Prasala, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were, you were ready with your question.
No, that's okay. Kath, pretty much the same question is. And, and so, the one question I do have, and at some point, are we letting legislation and dictate what's going to happen and how we implement housing initiative and maybe look at code to help with that for future developers? Or is that something that, how do, how do we do that? Or do we build relationships like NeighborWorks to, to kind of help play into that?
That's, that's a great question, and that's exactly the answer. We build relationships with, with housing corporations like NeighborWorks, or there's others in the area too, Rocky Mountain Corporation, Rock Mountain Housing. And we do the things that we were doing before the state legislature said we had to do them. They came up with those requirements for transit cities, and like, like I mentioned, Murray had already made the decision as a city years before to say, we're going to put higher densities around our transit stations and in the core of the city where it can be best handled, and then do kind of, for lack of a better way of saying it, our part in the region. Those requirements of SB 34 weren't intended for us because we were already doing it. We added it to our general plan, but zoning was already ahead of that. Those were intended for other cities which shall remain unnamed that hadn't done that yet and then needed to, to make that change. And they're, they're starting to do their part too. So, regionally, I think that's what we do. We, we double down on, on that commitment to the places where it can be done most effectively and with the least impacts to, to the other development patterns. There's a lot of, a lot of times the, you hear comments about the, the extinction of single-family homes, and that's, I get the concern, but when you, when you look at the numbers, it, it doesn't bear out. Ninety percent of the developed land in the Salt Lake Valley is single-family homes. Seventy percent of Murray's, ninety percent of the developed residential land is single-family homes in, in the valley. In Murray, seventy-something percent of our land overall is single-family zoning. So, adding, adding density to the core or to certain areas isn't going to, isn't, isn't going to cause the extinction of single-family neighborhoods, it's just adding density where we're able in some leftover spaces, so.
Okay, we've already exhausted our 20 minutes, and this is not nearly enough. So, I would like to propose that we continue this conversation. I think it's important. I think this report's important, and so, I would like to continue it and perhaps schedule some training including this, or, or a retreat or something that includes this and the general plan and, you know, how it all works together. I think it's, I think it's really important, and I, and I'm not sure that all council members or any council members really understand it. So, what do you think about that?
I think a retreat would be awesome to, to be able to do that in, Diane.
Yeah.
That's important. I think you made a good point by, you know, coupling it with the general plan and just understanding it a little bit more.
I think that would be really helpful. So, we'll have Jennifer, Jennifer set that up and, and see what we can do and continue this because I actually read the whole thing. I'm kind of one of those nerds, I love this stuff. So, I think it'd be really good to, to continue, okay? All right, if there are no more questions since we're running out of time, let's go to the next one, which is the General Plan and Zone Map Amendments, 5283, 5157, 5217, and 5177 South, and 151 East, 5300 South. My goodness, Melinda and Jared, it's you, you guys again.
Well, I, I think this discussion and some of the discussions we've had in the past couple of council meetings really kind of relate back to discussion item of number one, but I'll, I'll give an introduction on this, and then again, I'll let Jared do his thing. But this is for the property known at, as the Point at 53rd. So, the property there on the northeast corner of 53rd and State Street, and you'll recognize that for those of you who like to shop at Best Buy or eat at Chick-fil-A or Mimi's. And the, the property owner has come to us and has asked for, well, for a general plan amendment from general commercial to mixed use, and then a zone map amendment from the commercial development to mixed use as well. So, I'll let Jared take it from here.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to share this screen, make sure it's the right one. Can you all see that? General Plan and Zone Map Amendment? Okay, so, as Holland Partners, Holland Partners owns the Point at 53rd, and it's, it's about 13.2 acres of those different properties, and they are asking for that General Plan Amendment and Zone Map Amendment. Just to get into the background of that a little bit, if you want to see this from the air, you can see Costco across the street here and the IMC parking lot, Chick-fil-A on the north, and the park behind 53rd South here. So, all of these properties would be involved. There's a significant sort of mid-box, big box presence on the north end of the site that concerns the owners and, and makes them want to take this step into mixed use. Zoning wise, this is the current zoning, it is CD zoning, you can see the open space zone behind in the park, and, and here as well actually, in the park. I don't know whether it's not colored green like it should be, but that's open space zoning as well. It is largely CD zoning, just off of the map, there is some mixed use zoning you can see down here across. This is a future land use map segment. So, you're seeing the properties highlighted, they're in the general commercial category. This has all been categorized as professional office where the IMC campus is, the high school here. A couple of things to note, this is the station platform for Murray Central, so you have the tracks and front runner combining here. This is fairly close to that. There is some walkability through, it's not the greatest pedestrian environment, but that's what the general plan and the mixed use zoning designation would try to correct if that were, if that were changed. So, it has a good position in terms of staff's view of mixed use zoning because of its proximity to open space, that's important with mixed use. It has a good proximity to a very important transportation corridor of State Street, 53rd South, and good proximity to the transit that's available at Murray Central Station. And it's very close, you can just see to the north here, it's not far from the Murray City Center District zoning where we expect there to be eventually an expansion of our downtown area. So, it's downtown adjacent at the very least. The, we, we talked before about some of the differences between mixed use zoning and CD zoning. There are certain differences for height structures, parking differences, building setbacks, et cetera. The main difference, of course, being that mixed use zoning would allow a significant higher density residential component. In this particular case, sorry, in this particular case, they're close enough that it would be 80 units to the acre. In conversations with the, with the property owner, they're not looking at anything that dense, but that is, that's what the zoning would allow, about 80 units per acre. but that is the that's what the zoning would allow, about 80 units per acre. We do have, and I'll be quick because I know we're short on time and I want you to be able to ask questions as you have them. We did have a planning commission public hearing on this matter on December third. There were forty-two public notices mailed. We did have one, we only had one public comment. It was from a gentleman who was very excited about the possible change, hoping to see walkability increased in the area and something more more unique than the patterned development. The planning commission did vote seven to zero to recommend the approval based on the findings that you see there. We do feel as staff and recommend it as such to the planning commission that the general plan provides enough support to this change to be to be made, that the zone map amendment and the and the general plan amendment to support that would be appropriate under the under the current general plan and zoning. Do you have any questions for staff at this point?
I do.
Questions?
Tell me, I don't even know. Can I ask this question? What is Best Buy staying or moving or what? Do you know or what's happening?
Yeah, are they going to tear them down or how?
I would defer to Melinda. I don't think we know the answer to that question specifically yet. Do we, Melinda?
I no, we don't. But the the intent would be to convert probably some of the commercial space that they have into residential, but but more so to just add on to like to add existing stories on to, or excuse me, to add additional stories on to existing stories that are there. One of the things that Gary Howland has communicated when we've met with him on several occasions, which really we started meeting with him probably about a year ago. And he's just said that as he sees the future of retail being sustainable, it just can't be done without having a residential component. And he feels like this site would be a really great look residential component in. So he's really trying to get a, I would say, in front of some of the changes that may be coming down the line with with some of the leases or agreements that he has with the tenants and trying to be proactive and and get the residential in there that diversifies and makes that residential or the retail sustainable.
Other questions?
I do. So one of my questions is currently, is all his spaces leased right now? Are all his spaces, his retail spaces leased? Because I know he has the spaces above where Best Buy is, correct?
Yeah, I think that was like a unique a unique area that was created that I think any of his tenants can use. Jared, I don't know if you know anymore about that, but as far as some of the other.
Spaces.
There are some there are some office spaces and he actually has a there are some office spaces and some of those are occupied. I don't I couldn't say that they're all occupied. I know there are some occupants up there. And there is this, there's a small structured parking component to this project already too. It's not nearly large enough to house, to handle, they'd need more structured parking to handle a mixed use development. And it would significantly change with a mixed use development component like Melinda's describing. He's not talking about tearing everything down and starting from scratch. It's a successful and active complex. He just wants to add that component. And so you wouldn't be looking at a teardown, no, but a portion of it. We don't really know. We don't have plans or anything like that.
And how, what's the height restriction on this area for commercial?
So in commercial, it's the you get thirty feet if you're within a hundred feet of residential. There's not any residential nearby enough to affect it. So you get thirty feet and then you get a foot for every four feet you're distant. I don't know what his actual height restriction is based on the nearest residential, but it's it's over fifty. It's probably sixty, seventy, eighty feet tall right now. Same the same kind of rule would apply, but with a fifty-foot baseline for mixed use and then going up one to one.
So currently it's thirteen acres. Is that correct?
Yeah, just over.
Over a thousand units in that one space.
Eight eight hundred and something would be possible, eighty units per acre.
Eighty, okay, I just I think it was over a thousand.
Oh, it might it might be. I haven't done that math recently. It's been been off my radar for a little bit.
I was just trying to to get.
It was over a thousand what? Did you say? I'm sorry.
It was like a thousand or a thousand units, yeah.
Okay.
That they could, I mean, what's in code now? So, okay.
Yeah, just over.
Those are my questions.
Thank you. The one thing I neglected to mention, and I just wanted to, if you guys would indulge me one second, I was going to share a screen one more time. Can I do that? This is from the planning commission's presentation. I know that we've been talking about the general plan, and so I wanted to I wanted to just show this really briefly. This area too, one of those supports for it is that this area was identified on the general plan for future study and changes as consideration for a BRT station village. When that Bus Rapid Transit line is implemented on State Street, this corner is anticipated to be a station village area under that general plan. And anyway, just just to show you that. So anyway, we did feel like the the change is appropriate, recommended such to the planning commission. And then their recommendation to you was positive as well.
Any other questions for Jared?
One last question. I know in the we're currently where City Hall sits, that is considered MCCD and
Yes.
units. So let's say that property then gets sold to mix. Well, I guess it could be mixed use, right, currently?
It's MCCD, so it could if we move City Hall to the new location, then that acreage would all be available for development.
How many acres is that?
Six something.
Okay, so not say, I mean, I think this is the right location for this type of use.
Yeah.
So I just want to kind of get a footing over the surrounding and the numbers. So thank you.
That's perfect. Thank you. The MCCD, one thing to keep in mind too, this area is just outside the MCCD zone. The MCCD acreage was all included in a public works study that and a capital improvements program from before. So that six acres of City Hall site that could be redeveloped has already been planned for in terms of public works and facilities. So and we've identified under the new sewer master plan how to deal with additional units being added to this part of State Street as well. So we should be okay in terms of public services for at least the beginnings of these developments. And then there's going to have to be some upgrades made as additional projects come in.
Yeah, in fact, this project, we received the application for this in September, I think. And based on some concerns from Public Works, we asked the applicant if he wouldn't mind delaying the application until we got numbers back on sewer capacity. So that is something that we go through and we look at when we have these applications come through. As we look about service capacity, infrastructure, if it can take on the new growth. And in this particular case, there was a question. And so the Howlands were gracious enough to let us to delay the application to be heard until we received that information back. So so this is an application that's been in since September and is finally coming to you now.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Melinda. Thanks, Jared. All right, now we're at number three, text amendment for residential chicken keeping. Melinda and Jared again.
Well, this is an item that the city council asked us to review. And I think that request came to us late summer. So we've taken the time to research kind of what the last five years or so of chicken keeping and the history of what what we have, I guess, addressed in Murray City during the last five or so years. And again, I'm just going to let Jared take it from here.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and share this screen. And we can talk about residential residential chickens. There's a number of things to be aware of. Just first, in terms of a timeline, in 2012, there was an increase in code enforcement cases from chickens. And the council asked planning to look at an issue or to look at the issue. From 2013 to 2015, there were some open houses and a draft ordinance. And there was a positive recommendation from the planning commission. But in 2016, the council eventually rejected the chicken ordinance. But in 2020, they we were asked, as Melinda said, to look into it again. The the proposed, as she mentioned, we we did do a survey and there were a number of responses. But just I wanted to go over the proposal and then we'll kind of back into the the reason that it's been proposed this way because of the survey. This is this is our proposal, that we would allow chickens because the overwhelming response on the survey was that people in the city appear to want the residential allowance for keeping chickens. So on anything less than 6,000 square foot lots, and we have a few that are less than that, we would allow a maximum of four chickens. And this is assuming, again, that we're talking about only single family detached dwellings. This wouldn't apply to townhomes. It wouldn't apply to apartments. So it'd be single family detached dwellings. Four chickens at 6,000 to almost 10,000 square feet, five to six for over 10,000 square feet, and finally eight for anything larger than 12,000 square feet. And this again assumes residential zoning. That's not a one zoning that you would already be allowed to have a certain number of chickens based on the agricultural zone itself. So this applies to single family zones, not the agriculture zone necessarily. Sorry. And then again, for coops, there are some small standards proposed based again on those on those responses in the research that the planning staff did. Zach was really diligent in looking through different codes from different cities to get kind of best practices. Five feet from property lines, twenty-five feet for an adjacent property line setback, ten feet from anybody's dwelling, seven feet as a maximum for the for the coop height, and then some minimum four square feet per chicken to keep them cleaner. And that that keeps them cleaner and from smelling as much, makes them easier to take care of the chickens. This is this is some of the data that we collected based on the other cities in the area that are allowing chickens. Most of them do. There are a few that do not. And you're going to see a lot of a lot of data in there about whether or not a permit is required. That was a significant question that we asked in the survey and and when we were conducting research with other cities about how they handle their chickens. There were sixteen cities in Salt Lake County reviewed. Nine of them require a permit. And on average, those cities allow for about seven chickens. That's mostly based on lot size. So we're trying to stay right in that same in that same vein. This is all about the coops. Again, we kind of went over that that data really, really quickly. But we have this available for you if you want to look at it in greater detail. We feel like this represents or what we're proposing represents the best amalgamation of this data and what seems to be working out. So when we called and did the research, we were fortunate to be behind the curve in allowing them a little bit in this case because we could ask them, what has worked out for you and what have you found is not working and adjust our numbers accordingly? So that's what we tried to do here. Code enforcement cases, again, we, one of the main concerns going into it was our planning commission, when we told them we were going to be looking into it again, said, hey, we worry about the availability of enforcement personnel for this. How is it? You know, we don't want to overwhelm code enforcement or have to hire six people just to go out and patrol chickens. So that was a big concern as we talked to code enforcement officials and personnel from other cities and got their numbers for cases. We felt a lot better about it after we got their numbers back. They're not actually seeing that much of an increase in code enforcement need from chickens. Most of the time, people are pretty good about it. So we did feel better about it after that. We're probably most on par with Taylorsville and Midvale. There have been a number of cases, but they're they're not terribly significant in terms of the numbers that we handle overall. We feel like we can absorb that. Other other data we wanted to talk about just really quickly, this is a snip from the survey that was conducted. We did get more than a thousand responses to the to the survey about chickens. It was a really good, a really good response. A large, the the great majority of those, seventy-nine percent of those responses were in favor of allowing residential chickens until we did move forward with an ordinance. Of those respondents, a lot favored there being a majority slightly favored there being no permit required for the keeping of those chickens. The planning commission struggled with that idea a little bit. And I'm sorry, I don't have a slide about that, but the planning commission struggled with that just a little bit. And although they stopped short of saying they wanted a permit requirement written into the proposed ordinance, they did propose requiring chicken owners to register with the city. So we can at least have a list, an ongoing list of addresses where there are chickens. So we have a point of reference when we get complaints, if we get complaints. Hopefully, we get no complaints if anything is adopted. But in the in the event that we got complaints, we'd have a list to reference and say, oh, yeah, Joe Jones came in two years ago and registered to have four chickens. Let's check out what's going on. So we at least have that that record. That's what the planning commission suggested, and we have written that into the draft. So that's where we're proposing. The planning commission did recommend approval, but with that one small change for residential chicken keeping standards. Do you have any questions from from all of that? I know that's a lot of data to go through, but.
Can I go?
Yes.
Okay. So just thank you for bringing it back and for all of the research to other cities. It's really comprehensive. And I I reached out to all my chicken people, which sounds derogatory, but is not intended to be so at all. But I have a great number of neighbors who have chickens. And I only know they have chickens because in pre-COVID times, our kids were in and out of each other's yards all day long. And so, you know, I'd wander back and admire their setups. And so so in speaking with them, I wonder with looking at what's best practice in other cities, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So there is no permit in this ordinance. So does that mean there's no fee with registering? Or is there a fee associated with registering?
No, there would not be a fee associated with registering. It would just be a registration for information purposes only. And we wouldn't frankly know if people chose to do it without registering. It wouldn't be a violation necessarily. We just would like them to voluntarily register their name.
And and when I reached out to people, I said, hey, look, look through what's being proposed. Let me know what this looks like compared to what you're doing, what would be challenging, what, you know, just trying to have that conversation. And there were several who said, oh, no, I didn't even know I wasn't allowed to. And I think that that's pretty common. My one big, well, two, two things that that caught my eye. One was the number of chickens, especially for those under the 6,000 square feet for the lot. I live in one of those lots and I don't want chickens. My my partner might. But I want to take care of anything else that's alive. But with that, chickens lay in cycles in their lifetimes. They don't lay their whole life long. And so that small number would mean that some wouldn't have any eggs for a certain amount of time with that small amount. And with a big focus being on, you know, being able to provide for yourself, being able to, you know, teach those lessons to your family and your children. I do have that concern with the small amount with the under 6,000 square foot lot. And then my other thing is right against the property line. I understand the the rationale for how many feet away from somebody else's dwelling. That makes a lot of sense to me. But as far as how many feet away from their property line, that one I'm not so sure about. Because, I mean, if I was to build a coop or a dog run, I'd want to use an existing fence I already have on my property line. And if I'm lucky enough that it's enough feet away from somebody else's dwelling, that seems like the ideal location to me. So if if you wouldn't mind speaking to to both of those, I'd love to hear.
I wish I could. I'm not the expert. I would need Zach for that. He did the research on all of this. So he'd be able to tell you why. My, I think I do know about the the structure, the coop being five feet off. That's because we're viewing it as an accessory structure. And generally speaking, you want it at least, although the the desire might be there to use the fence or an existing wall or something as a as a component of that structure. That seems like a good idea in theory, but it's always a bad idea in practice because it creates drainage problems onto another property that we don't allow. So accessory structures have to be at least one foot from a property line. And five feet keeps you out of problems with building codes, although most coops are not going to be large enough to need a building permit. Yeah, I'm going to guess most of them are not going to get building permit at 200 square feet and and up. So it shouldn't be an issue, but five feet is kind of the magic number, just to make sure that there are never any issues. We could look at shortening that, but probably not to zero.
Right, okay.
Like accessories.
Is that similar to, I'm thinking like the dog run example or a play structure? Is there a similar code for that?
Well, yes and no. I mean, it depends on this. This it depends on what we consider a structure. So a dog run, I have to I'd have to look at what they're what they proposed. Sheds and garages are typically the accessory structures that get brought up. But there are there are those lucky people who have pool houses to deal with. I hope to be one of those someday. And and yeah, certainly dog runs. I've not. I hope to be one of those someday. And, and yeah, certainly dog runs. I've not, I've not had that come up because usually they're chain link or something like that. But people do tend to use existing walls and fences as a, as a, as a part of the structure. We can look at that. I'll have Zach look into it and see if they had other issues with that before it comes back to you.
Thank you. And I, I probably should have emailed ahead with, with some of the really specific questions, but I really appreciate that. And I, and I'll just say one more thing before I unmute myself and let someone else go of, I'm just, I'm really grateful this is coming back. I think it's not so much a matter of allowing chickens as keeping track of them and giving educational guidance on how to keep them and, and worries about pests. I mean, I don't think Chief Burnett's on this particular meeting, but is always teasing me about my rat and raccoon complaints. But I, I think, you know, living where we live, those are always going to be issues and people are already keeping them in great numbers. And if we can give some guidance and, and helping them be independent, I think it's great. But I'll mute and let other people ask questions or share opinions.
Council member Martinez, I think that's actually, your comment just led into one of the reasons why we would want to keep things off of property lines. So that there is a little bit of distance between any issues that could be created by the coop or the chickens and the, the property line. In particular, you know, if a neighbor has other animals, if they have dogs and there's chickens that are kept right up against the property line, that could, can create some issues as well. But it's primarily a, a building code thing as Jared outlined.
Yes, go ahead.
That was, I think, remind me Diane, you were with us, but that seemed to be the biggest concern back when we looked at it before was that property line with the rats and things like that. So that was, that was the, the biggest thing that came about. And it's kind of done a, an about face because it, you said a thousand people, Jared, were surveyed and it was like 70 something percent. Now, my memory, Blair, you were there. My memory is not very good, but it seemed like it wasn't that high of a, of a, of, and interest back then, but it certainly has changed. And I do have people in my area that have requested for, for chickens. So, but back then it didn't seem like it was that big of an interest. But, I mean, it was-
You're just, you're not remembering Brett.
There was interest, but it was not, it didn't seem like it was 70, 80% like Jared surveyed. And I could be wrong, but.
Yeah.
It was, it was pretty high as, as I remember. Yeah. But one of the issues was having, making sure there was enough room as, as I remember. And we have them. In my neighborhood, when we go walking, we hear, we hear them all the time. So, you know, I just think it's a good idea to, to recognize that we have them and regulate it and make sure they're good neighbors.
Diane, would they be allowed in an area like your area? In your-
Well, no, not in the condos, but I have a big, I mean, a big neighborhood.
Sure. Sure. So I'm just talking about, are they allowed in where you live?
No.
Okay.
Oh, no.
All right. All right. Thank you.
If I mind, Diane?
Yes, please.
I, I don't know what the right and the wrong of this is, but I'll tell you, I was raised with chickens growing up. And they do, and, and I think Kat talked to us a little bit, because of their droppings, because of the feed they eat, they draw rats, they draw skunks, they draw raccoons. We just, there's chickens behind us someplace and we just spent several hundred dollars this year getting rid of rats that we've never had before. So, you know, there's a reason there's agriculture areas. And, and Kat's right again, you, you get half a dozen chickens, you might get one or two eggs. I, I did have one constituent reach out to me, but it's been quite a while ago. But his, he had a, a child that had autism and had bonded with a chicken. And they were trying to get him to get rid of that chicken. I, I think those incidences are a little different than trying to raise chickens to get fresh eggs because you'll never meet that quota with half a dozen chickens or eight or 10 chickens. But just be really aware that there's going to be farming problems and they, and I'll tell you, we tried everything we could. We made Lowe's a lot of money trying to find things to get rid of them. And finally we just called exterminator and, and they come and came and got rid of the rats. But with chickens comes that type of problem. And I just want, I want you to be very aware of that. Thank you.
Okay. We will continue on. Do we have any announcements? Jan, Jennifer, whomever's?
Yeah. I just have one announcement. I just wanted to remind you guys of Jan's socially distanced retirement reception that we're going to have on January 28th from 12 to 2.
Hey. All right. Sounds good. We are now adjourned. Thank you. You guys are great.